Good evening and welcome to the February 22, 2024 Regular City Council Meeting. Just for our audience, there are several components of this meeting. We have, we'll have the presentations of which many of you are far. We have consent agenda, then there is a public hearing, and then we have some action items that we will vote on separately at the end. So, we're glad that you're all here. We love to see full council chambers, especially when people aren't split up in opposing T-shirts for or against an issue. And I don't see any commonality of T-shirts here, so we're just glad that you are here. So, Clerk, would you please pull the, or take the role?
Mayor Hartke.
Here.
Vice Mayor Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Encinas.
Here.
Councilmember Ellis.
Present.
Councilmember Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Orlando.
Here.
Councilmember Poston.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Very good. Our invocation tonight will be presented by Pastor Mike Gowan's from Bethel Chandler Church and our Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Ellis.
Well, thank you. I just want to begin by saying thank you, Mayor and Vice Mayor in the council. I will be graduating my last child here, and it has been a joy to raise my kids in Chandler. Love this city and just wanted to display that gratitude to all of you and the leadership. So, let's bow our heads and pray. Heavenly Father, we gather today to discuss matters concerning our city. We humbly invite your presence into this council meeting. Grant us, your servants, the wisdom to make the decisions that will lead to prosperity and peace in our community. Lord, we ask for your guidance in our discussions, that we may be fruitful and constructive. Help us to listen with open minds, speak with kindness and respect to one another, and may be, may we be reminded of the responsibility bestowed upon us to serve our community with integrity and fairness. We pray for unity amongst us, that despite our differences, we may work together toward the common good of all who live in our city. Instill in us a spirit of cooperation, that we may tackle the challenges we face with collective strength and determination. Bless our city, Lord, with safety, health, prosperity. Protect it from harm. Guide its development so that it may be a place of opportunity and joy for all of its citizens. May our actions today contribute to the well-being and growth of our community. We thank you for the opportunity to serve, and we place our trust in your loving guidance. May our efforts today reflect your love and justice. We pray all this in your name, Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you, Councilmember. We've got a fun number of scheduled public appearances, and for those of you who filled out a card here, those are unscheduled public appearances, and then we will be giving you an opportunity to share at the end, per open meeting law. So, I would like to invite Councilmember Orlando to come up front with me. We'll go from there. All right. First, we have a proclamation for Disability Awareness Month. If I could invite Tom Fay, the Chair of our Mayor's Committee for People with Disabilities, to come on up front. Whereas individuals with disabilities are valued contributing members of our community, furthermore, individuals with any disability, be it physical or mental, have the right to achieve a self-determined and valued lifestyle. And whereas the strength of our community lies within its inclusivity and empowerment of these individuals, so every person, regardless of ability, is afforded equal opportunities, rights, and respect. And whereas it is our collective responsibility to champion the rights of people with disabilities, fostering awareness and understanding of the challenges they face, to create a more inclusive and accessible society. And whereas every community member's participation and their openness to learn and acknowledge each individual's contribution, we all play a role in an inclusive community for people with disabilities. Whereas through education, advocacy, and collaboration, let us work together towards creating a community that recognizes, celebrates, and empowers the abilities of all. Now therefore, I, Kevin Hartke, Mayor of the City of Chandler, Arizona, do hereby proclaim the month of March as National Disabilities Awareness Month. And Tom, you've got some comments you're gonna make, I think, right? So, I'm gonna give you the mic in a minute. So, every year, our Mayor's Committee for People with Disabilities hosts their annual Disability Awareness Awards to create awareness about developmental disabilities, teach the importance of inclusion within every aspect of life, and share the stories of individuals with a disability to show that a successful life is possible. So, I am proud to help recognize our student educator, volunteer, and employers of the year. So, Tom, here you go.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Tom Fay, grateful to be here. The Chandler Mayor's Committee for People with Disabilities is proud to recognize the following award recipients. The first is Student of the Year, which is Jakari Johnson. Jakari is a senior at Chandler High. Throughout his high school career, Jakari has participated in unified sports and helped create a culture of acceptance amongst his peers. He's an example for all, for our, for all students to have high expectations for themselves and to rise to meet any challenges they may encounter. When faced with adversity, Jakari does not give up, and he continues to work hard until he meets his goal. Jakari has positively impacted his peers and students with disabilities throughout the community. Congratulations, Jakari, on being the 2024 Student of the Year. The next is Educator of the Year, Christian Wollst. Christian is an adaptive PE teacher for CUSD. He has been in special education for over 15 years and is adored by students and respected by his peers. One of Christian's many achievements was implementing a partner PE program to create a more inclusive learning environment while forging lasting friendships. Christian also dedicates his time outside the classroom to positively impact the lives of those with disabilities. He spends every summer working with the city's Adaptive Recreation Camp, Camp Challenge, and coaches many Special Olympic sports. Thank you, Christian, and congratulations on being awarded the 2024 Educator of the Year. The next is Volunteer of the Year, John Marshall. John has volunteered as a coach for Special Olympics for over 10 years. He has coached softball, basketball, and bowling. John is recognized as being incredibly patient and genuinely enjoys, enjoys coaching and leaving a lasting impact on the athletes. He inspires athletes to work hard and continuously improve. Thank you, John, and congratulations on your 2024 award. This year, the committee would like to honor two Employers of the Year. Bobby Vasquez from Fry's. And Sean Christman from the Crayola Experience. Bobby goes out of his way to hire employees with disabilities. Not only, not only do these jobs benefit the employees with increased confidence and self-sufficiency, but by hiring these individuals, the community is made aware that people with disabilities are an asset and valued contributing members of our community. Thank you, Bobby, and Fry's at Riggs McQueen, and congratulations on being awarded the 2024 Employer of the Year. Sean Christman from the Crayola Experience was nominated by one of his employees who said that Sean treats everyone so well, and I'm so happy I worked there. He took a chance on me and treats me like a normal person. I love working at Crayola Experience. Sean is known for caring deeply about his employees and the community and creating an inclusive work environment. Thank you, Sean, and the Crayola Experience, and congratulations on being awarded the 2024 Employer of the Year.
All right. Our next recognition has to do with recreation and athletics for individuals with disabilities, and I'd like to invite John Septon, the staffer with the best hair in the city. We're all jealous, John. Recreation and Athletics for Individuals with Disabilities, or RAD, has been serving the Chandler community for decades. RAD works to make sure that financial resources are not a barrier when individuals with a disability look to participate in the sport or hobby that they're passionate about. And after 20 years of service to the community, we are honored to recognize and thank RAD for the work that they do to ensure Chandler continues to be a premier city to live, work, and in this case, play for all of our residents. John?
Well said, Mayor. We'd like to invite the board from RAD to come down, and as you make your way down, those that want to get a photograph with the mayor, I'm gonna give a little bit of a history. It was 20 years ago, just a few Chandler parents noticed that a program, that program cost kept some athletes with disabilities from participating in sports programming with the city's adaptive program. A conversation during a basketball game led to the formation of a fundraising group aiming to reduce those costs and, and to provide additional access to the program. While lacking fundraising expertise initially, their passion to make a difference was insurmountable. The fund, first fundraising attempt, you guys remember this? A rummage, a rummage sale at the Chandler Bowling Alley AMF parking lot raised $250, which in today's dollars might have been about $25,000, right? But it only fueled their determination. In 2004, the group officially became a charitable entity, Recreation and Athletics for Individuals with Disabilities, RAD. They elected a board, crafted a mission statement, and established bylaws. Over the years, they learned the intricacies of grant applications, volunteer solicitation, and organizing successful events like the biannual, or the annual Bowl-a-thon and the golf scramble. RAD has since been a pillar of support for the Chandler community, easing financial commitments associated with adaptive recreation and learning programs, allowing more individuals to participate fully. In addition to supporting Chandler Special Olympics sports programs with equipment and uniforms, they have organized social events such as the Spring Dance, the Family Lual, and movie nights at the theater. Their scholarship program enables individuals to apply for assistance, and they have facilitated entry into national competitions covering fees and travel costs. RAD has reason to be proud for the service over the past two decades. They have successfully raised and donated over $500,000, or half a million, to Chandler Adapted, while remaining true to their commitment of being 100% volunteer organization. Their original motto, "RAD pays, so others can play," continues to guide their unwavering dedication to this goal. Thank you, RAD, for 20 years of commitment, contribution, and fun in, in the city of Chandler. Bless.
Next, we would like to recognize our GFoa Distinguished Budget Award for FY 2324. And if we could call up our budget team? And John, let me turn the mic to you.
Okay. Hi, guys. Tonight, we recognize the budget staff, and, and here they are. We are short one this evening who's watching from home, but our budget team is made up of Matt Dunbar, who is their, their lead here, Helen Parker, who's watching from home, Kat Dixon, Enrique Sandoval, and Savannah Martinez. And they are small but mighty. We have one vacancy right now, but we also recognize the efforts of Julie Bilton Libby Stressman, who promoted during the budget process in the prep of this last budget, to positions in police and utilities, taking their talents within other areas of the city, but they contributed in meaningful ways as well. This year also included, on top of it all, the implementation of a new budget software and document creation software that required significant efforts during the process, which can almost be compared to flying a plane while trying to build it. The City of Chandler has earned the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award from the Government Finance Officers Association, or GFoa, for many years, and the Fiscal Year 202324 Budget Document Award makes this the 36th consecutive year. This award reflects the commitment of staff in meeting the highest principles of governmental budgeting. To receive the budget award, the city must satisfy nationally recognized guidelines for effective budget presentation. The guidelines are designed to assess how well our entity's budget serves as a policy document, a financial plan, an operational guide, and a communication device. Budget documents must be rated proficient in all four categories. Within the categories, there is 14 mandatory criteria to receive the award, and I'm happy to report that Chandler's budget has rated outstanding in many of those areas. Additionally, I want, it would, I would be remiss if I did not also recognize the vast amount of work done by every department throughout the city, the city manager's office staff, and mayor and council for their direction and support to create and improve the budget document annually. We are thankful for everyone's contributions, and congratulate the city and the budget team for this accomplishment, and we're proud to have such a talented and dedicated team and celebrate Team Chandler tonight. Thank you.
Well, that concludes our upfront part of the public appearances. We'll wait, we'll wait a few seconds and allow people to exit before we continue. All right. Our last remaining public appearance is Mr. Tony Rodriguez. Mr. Rodriguez, are you with us tonight? All right. Please come forward, and sir, got a seat for you up front? Mr. Rodriguez, if you would state your name and address for the record, and then you have up to three minutes to share your comments. That green light on the days will be lit, and when you have 30 seconds left, it'll turn yellow, and then red means your time is over. So, if you'd state your name and address.
Do I speak into this?
Yes, sir. We can hear you.
My name is Tony V. Rodriguez. My address is 1869 West Estrella Drive in Chandler, Arizona, 85224. Good evening. My name is Tony Rodriguez. I live in 1869 West Estrella Drive, 85224. I am asking for the City of Chandler to pass an ordinance to make it illegal to feed wild birds, which is pigeons, doves, et cetera. Since last July, I have submitted over 75 submissions to the City Council meeting public comment forum website to date. This was advised by the city clerk's office with only one response last August 1, 2023, with no action. My wife and I are disabled homeowners who have lived in our Chandler, Arizona residence since March of 2004. Over the past several years, I have been getting more and more pigeons, doves, and other wild birds in my yard and on my home's roof, back patio, block fencing, city light poles, city sidewalk, and other neighbors' properties. They are exponentially increasing, and now number approximately 50 to 80 birds or more at any given time, thus causing more and more damage to my roof, which in turn has void, has voided my roof's warrant, my 30-year warranty, and resulted in current repair costs of $11,825. All this from their activity on my roof and excrement dropping over time. As well, their excrement makes its way down to my backyard, pool, patio, area flooring, and various parts of our property, which is a significant health concern because it carries harmful diseases. This is not only a nuisance, causing property damage, but also unsanitary living conditions for myself, my wife, and our neighbors, including anyone who walks on the sidewalk or works on the light poles, which is city property, not allowing us to enjoy our outside yard any longer. This is all due to my back neighbor, who admittedly told me and my friend that they feed the wild pigeons and other birds, that it doesn't help my situation at all. They feed the wild birds three times daily, if not more, with their feeder, in the early morning, early and late afternoons. Since it is currently, currently lawful, lawful for them to do so, this issue is only getting worse each day. Since it is not legal at this time in the City of Chandler, there's nothing I can do to stop or prevent my neighbor from continuing, continuing to feed the wild birds. As per my conversations with Mayor Cupa County and the City of Chandler officials, myself and my neighbors have our hands tied on this issue, and it continues to escalate. It has gotten way out of hand. I am here asking the City of Chandler to adopt similar ordinances as our neighboring cities have recently done, due to the same issues that we are experiencing. Mesa, Tempe, and Phoenix all have passed ordinances making it illegal to feed pigeons and wild birds within its city limits. Please support us by passing an ordinance to make it illegal to feed pigeons and wild birds, not only for our protection, but for every Chandler resident as well. Thank you all for your time and consideration of this matter. I look forward to hearing from each and every one of you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, Councilmember Stewart, Tony, did, what did your neighbor say? Like, have you brought this to them? I'm sure you've talked to them about it. They just don't care?
Basically, no. I, I had a conversation with them, and they came over, and I'm like, hey, by what you're doing is causing a lot of damage to my property. And I explained to them how, how badly it is as far as health concerns and disease, and I thoroughly went through everything, and I explained it all to them. And it seems like after I went through that conversation, it didn't get nasty or anything like that. I just kind of kindly spelled it out to them. Then the issue got, actually got worse after that. So, she said, basically told me, hey, it doesn't help that I feed the wild birds. I'm like, no, it does not help me, my situation, or everybody else's that live in this neighborhood either. And I asked her, I said, it'd be nice if you stopped. And that, that was basically ended the conversation. And that conversation was about a year and a half ago, approximately.
It's interesting. City manager, have we ever dealt with anything like this before? Or like, have we helped, like, sort of create a buffer or communicate with neighbors or help them?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Stewart, in this particular situation, we have looked into this matter, and there's not a code violation that we can cite. However, we have had several conversations between staff and Mr. Rodriguez to try to find maybe some alternatives that could help mitigate the problem, and we're still working on that issue with him presently.
I've, I've had conversations with the City of Chandler Police Department as well. They expressed my concerns, and basically, they were pretty cool. They were pretty nice about it. They explained to me that, yeah, it is, it is legal right at this moment. And they're saying, well, basically, your only option is to sue your neighbor. And I'm like, man, I was brought up not having to sue my neighbor, right? You're supposed to love your neighbor and get along with your neighbor and everything, but basically for my property damage, that was, they told me that was, that's the only thing that I could do.
Thanks, Mayor.
Yeah. Thank you so much for sharing your story. Just had a couple of questions. You live in a HOA community, a non-HOA community?
No, I do not.
Okay. Is there, City Manager, is there a way that, how, how do city, how do we normally help residents like this? Do, do we have them go out and do a survey, or have them go out and do a petition? How do we normally go about trying to, if there's an ordinance or someone is trying to put something forth like this, do we typically have them go back and, and do a petition with their neighbors? Or how do we normally look at things like this? If we want to move it to action, you know?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor Harris, there's not a specific protocol for an ordinance to appear. Obviously, if a resident wanted to submit a petition, if there was a group of neighbors, we would present that to you. If you'd like us to draft some language around this, we certainly can, and present that through our normal, either subcommittee or work session process for your evaluation. At this point, what we are working on, because there is not an ordinance, is other ways to perhaps deter birds from landing near this property. So, there may be some other mitigation tools that we can offer, and maybe some volunteer services we can partner with. So, we're investigating if that is an option at this point.
Well, can you, what I think, what, what I would like to say, if there, if you can come back to council, I know we probably all have a lot of questions, but maybe, I know you're working with the city right now. I know that they're working on mitigating your issue right now behind the scenes, putting up, you know, different things to mitigate the birds. I know we're working with you behind the scenes, but perhaps, you can continue to work with the city, and then maybe we can work together to figure out how we can move something like this forward. But, you know, it's gonna take your community neighbors as well, getting involved in things like that, but I would like to see if we can continue to work with him behind the scenes, like we are, help him mitigate what he's dealing with right now on his personal property, and then come back with some options to, to council about some things that you think we can look into and, and get back with us. And, and if you could, please submit to us, he said he sent 75 different requests to the city council. If you can get that to Mayor- If you can get that to Mayor and Council, so we can just kind of review that as well, that would be, that would be great. And hopefully, that will be helpful. We can probably get back with you and give you some more options, look further into the network. Okay, thank you.
As far as like the, can I ask a question? As far as like the side of being unhealthy and disease-ridden, what can I do as far as like the Health Department or something like that? Because the issue is going to continue to happen as long as she continues doing her action by feeding these birds, right? But my concern, not only is property damage, but my wife is visually impaired and she can't see when she's walking out on the back patio and stepping into this excrement, right? And it's kind of a concern on both, both sides. So do I get the Health Department involved or is that something?
We can probably, I would think that we can work with Tom, our police, our fire chief and get with City Manager. You can help look into the health concerns that he has to mitigate any risks, to help support what you're dealing with right now. Would that, would that help?
That'd help. And I'm going to continue. How are me, whatever you guys need me to do to come back, I'm willing to do whatever it takes. But I would really like to see this ordinance passed through the City of Chandler because I think it's going to help not only me, but a lot of folks that are in the same situation that I'm in.
Thank you for sharing your concern, I really appreciate it.
Councilmember Ellis, then Councilmember Orlando and then Councilmember Poston.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to talk to our city attorney, to what level that we can get involved here with this, because this is wild animals, birds and things that are probably, most people don't have any control over, except for putting things around the house and fixing, which I know that the city manager says that they are working, we're trying to install things that will deter those birds. To what extent can we intervene, actually?
Mayor, if I may, Councilmember Ellis, obviously, there's a point where there's private property interest that we can't tread on. And without an ordinance in place, there's no legal violation. So we are going to be limited and as, there are things we can look at to try and help, short of bringing it into the court system.
In my, just another.
Let us do this first.
Okay, sorry.
Speak to me if you want to talk, then we can go from there, so.
All right, thank you, appreciate that, Mayor.
Councilmember Orlando.
Yeah, Mayor, I think we're skirting around this. Maybe, I like to see what these ordinances are that are out there. Let's see how, I mean, I'm going to be very, a little bit bolder here. Let's look at, let's get some ordinances, let's take a look at them. And then maybe we could, like you said, do a subcommittee, see if this thing is something we could, we could live with and work with. If other communities are doing it, I mean, I can remember those of us that have been here a long time, remember all the farms and the dairies? And all the pigeons and everything else? And so, yeah, we, we're way beyond those areas and maybe it's time we take a look at something like that to help us as we grow into a city versus our farmland. So have staff get back with us on that, some ideas, okay?
Councilmember Poston.
Thank you, Mayor. And Tony, I don't know if you can answer this. Otherwise, I'd ask the City Manager if we can take a look to dovetail on what Councilmember Orlando said. I'd be interested in the other city ordinances. But what I'm curious about is, do they exclude items like hummingbird feeders or other birds that maybe wouldn't be considered so intrusive as pigeons? So that's what I'm kind of curious. You know, you just don't want to get too detailed into property rights and people's ability to attract maybe some birds that aren't considered
Understandable.
The same, so we could find that out.
Counsel, any other comments? Tony, would you like to say anything else?
I have, my air conditioning company, for example, they brought to my attention with all the excrement on my AC unit, right? They advised me to put a screen around the bottom of my air conditioner because they seen how much damage was being done, not only to my roof, but to my AC unit. So that is something we instrumented already, to put that netting around so they can't roost underneath the air conditioning. But I found out from my roofing company, my warranty is voided now because of what's happened. But if I put any kind of deterrent devices or any spikes or anything like that on my roof, they're like, no, that definitely voided your warranty too. So there's a lot of things I've looked into that I can't do.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah. And I guess City Attorney and City Manager, I'm, again, just a voice of caution. I think we're all, I clean my car every day because of, on my neighbor's tree, but I'm also cautious of migratory birds that go through here and people who have backyard doves and other things. So I'm, I'm, I'm just, I want to tread with caution here that we don't throw out the baby with the bathwater here. But if there's, if there's, one other question I would ask, is there anything, just under the guise of a nuisance law here, are tacking something there that could be explored? If one person on one property is creating a nuisance for another, is there something there that maybe we could at least explore? I don't need an answer right now, so, okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
All right, council consent agenda. I know one council member has asked for a presentation on items 18, 19, and 20, so just to foster other conversations, I'm going to move those three to action. So leaving whoever makes a motion, exclude those. And but I'd also would like to give people, since we did not have the opportunity Monday, if you'd like to comment on, on any of these things that normally we might do on Monday, rather than just do a sweep vote. So that would be appropriate after we have a motion and a second sans 18, 19, and 20, so. Going to action, yeah.
Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda on February 22nd, 2024, regular meeting items excluding 18, 19, and 22?
20.
20. But the remaining 1 through 27 excluding the ones that followed and shared.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second? Second by Councilmember Encinas. And Counsel, again, before we vote, normally on Monday, you would have a chance to call things out and, you know, and draw highlights. So why don't we start with Councilmember Poston and work her way this way if anyone would like to say anything.
Thank you, Mayor, I don't have any comments on the consent agenda.
Great. Same, all right.
Mayor, I had a question for John Knutson on the Xeriscate program and kind of, it was pretty good expense here, but I want to understand the savings and then, not only that, the water savings as it relates to this. I think this is a good program, but I think the public would like to know how this is going to work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel, for having interest in this particular program. Councilmember Stewart, this particular item in front of you this evening represents request, represents the city's water conservation commitment to reduction of non-functional turf in 14 of our city's rainwater retention basins. This should result in savings in both water and in maintenance for those, for those facilities. It's a turf to xeriscate conversion. So what that means is, these 14 areas are largely grass. So city has to maintain those, mow, upkeep, as well as a pretty hefty water bill for those over the years. So those acreages will be converted to a xeriscate. Let me show you, hopefully if I know what I'm doing here again. The 14, yeah, we've got the 14 sites, I've got them circled. Typically, the ones that we're dealing with are in northern Chandler because that's where these large landscaped areas exist. So we've got these 14 areas that we're showing you here that are majority of grass. I've got some examples here of, to kind of give you an idea. Here's one that exists on Alma School. And you can see these fairly large areas of grass. As you drive along Alma School, you look off left and right and you can see these large areas of grass. And there's really, we call them non-functional because they're not park areas, they're not used for virtually anything. So the, there's been a push recently because of the drought on the Colorado River for cities to look towards reducing that non-functional turf. So we've got several of those, that's one. We've got another here on Elliott. And these are pretty characteristic of the 14 that you'll see around. Now, what they'll look like when we're done is we're headed towards this look and these are also retention areas that we already have in town. So this one exists at Alma School and Elliott. And you can kind of see the look that we're after there. Desert, you know, trees, vegetation. So it's very much like the others that we have in town. And I'll show you another picture here. This one is Warner at Arrowhead. So just, you know, nice xeriscate, water savings, water savings landscape. And we're looking through some recent calculations in the vicinity of about 20 million gallons a year in savings. And in the vicinity of, I think, $50,000 plus in water savings alone. So we'll also see quite a savings on the maintenance side as well because we won't be mowing these. We'll have to maintain them, obviously, but the mowing will be dramatically reduced or that cost.
John, that's, that's great, great, great program. I'm glad you guys brought this forward. Real quick, I know we require our neighbors to have 50% coverage with like trees if they change out from, if they take advantage of our rebate program, they have to have 50%. I noticed some of those pictures may not have had 50% coverage by trees. So we have this heat island effect, which is like real and you know, when you walk through the green belts, it's definitely cooler. This will change that, especially for the neighbors that live close by. Do we have plans to use some of this cost savings to put in some low-water trees and add more trees?
The, the design, clearly not done yet, but the idea is to provide good coverage, probably very similar to what we're requiring for the residential as well. These are some older areas. I just wanted to kind of bring these in and show you another program that we have. We call it a re-vedge program. We also go back into these older ones and dress these up as well. So you'll probably see this program, the CIP program, working on the new ones and then our re-vedge program going into some of these older ones. And, you know, when you lose a tree, replace a tree, that sort of thing. So the idea is to make all of those retention areas, you know, look similar, different but similar.
Yeah. And thanks for bearing with me, since we didn't have a study session. One quick question is, we're short on soccer fields and practice fields. And as we get longer into the spring, daylight stays longer. And I know the kids, are we, are any of these being used for soccer or softball or any of that right now? Are these all just kind of green belts that nobody's using?
Well, it is possible that occasionally a neighbor, you know, might go down and kick a ball. I know, you know, a piece of grass, grass is difficult to find. These are typically irregular sized. They're not anything that would normally be used for like a local team's soccer practice where they could just, you know, drive in and use. These are much smaller typically. So we do intend to have public outreach. We are going to be contacting neighbors in the direct vicinity. So we will be having those conversations. So we hope that any situation like that would arise and then we could, we could, you know, kind of flex and shift on that, depending on what we find out.
Sure, because those green belts for neighbors, that could be important. If, like you said, they go down and kick a ball. So great that we're going to do neighborhood outreach because if we find out five or six neighbors like, no, 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 I kind of want to keep this green belt, then we have to kind of weigh the good with the bad here, right? So we're going to, there's a process.
We've all been there. I was a soccer player.
All right, great, thanks, John.
Thanks.
Mayor.
Yeah, I just want to echo Councilmember Stewart's concerns. This is like similar to alleyways. You're going to find folks that loved keeping them. You're going to find folks that want to get rid of it. So tread lightly, my friend.
Oh, yes.
Okay. Because we'll get the emails and we'll get the phone calls, good.
Well, public outreach is part of this and we'll be, we'll be with each and every one of the locations going through that process. Very good.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Councilmember Stewart, you had another one?
I'm going to take advantage of my, of my time here, since you're going down the line here. Hey, I just want to thank the Cambridge Medical Facility for choosing Chandler. You know, when you're bringing hospitals and medical services into the community, that's a really big deal. So you could have chosen many communities throughout the, you know, the East Valley and you chose Chandler. So I just want to thank you for that. That's item number eight on here, so thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Well, I just wanted to talk about the item, oh, wait a minute. I can go ahead? All right, yeah, okay, yeah, I'm sorry about that, you guys. Just wanted to make sure, because it's a long day today. Just how we continue to expand on our, we have a grant that we, that we went out to reach out for and to continue the Chandler Flex program because everyone's been talking about the Chandler Flex. And I love how we're working that particular item. And also, it's going to come with new technology. So for the next three years, expect the Flex to continue to happen. And I'm really just excited about what that program is.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Counsel, appreciate the question. Yes, we did apply for a federal grant called the TAN. And really, the goal of it is to expand service delivery through the use of technology and then also see how we can modify the service to expand into other areas. To be clear, the expansion would really come from freeing up potential local funds on existing service, to be able to pivot over into expanding out to Chandler Gilbert Community College. We also have the Air Park area that we're looking at expanding into, or at least studying the feasibility of that and what the cost might be and how many riders we might pick up. So we're certainly encouraged by that, but fingers crossed that we win the grant and it'll be all federally funded with a pretty minimal local match over three years.
Councilmember Ellis.
Appreciate that, Mayor. I wanted to bring up item number 13, the purchase of our mobile, our command vehicle, and said, what a wonderful idea. And I think that it's a congratulations in order to the chief and its department for receiving that. Mainly, I wanted the people of Chandler to know that these things are happening for their safety. So whenever there is an issue, we can respond very quickly. And Chief will come up right now and give us a little bit of a background and why we're doing this and how important it is for us to continue to make this kind of innovative ideas come to pass.
Sure, thank you, Mayor and Counsel. Through the Mayor, Councilmember, this is a mobile command unit. These units are in place for our largest incidents in public safety. And so this will be a joint unit for both the police department and the fire department. There are so many times through our response throughout the year where we are in situations where we have a police situation with an active fire situation, with an EMS situation, all unfolding at one time. And what happens is, we end up using multiple radio channels. Oftentimes, we're in different command posts throughout the incident. We could be in our vehicles, police in their vehicles, and then any other outside stakeholder who's involved in this, also within their own vehicles or in their own command post. What this unit does, it's a lot like our EOC.
Yeah.
Where we can bring everybody under one roof. We can all be on the same page, even though that we're working on different aspects of the mission to achieve whatever it is we're trying to achieve. We are all under one page, we're working off of one sheet of music. We're able to communicate with each other. And it really, at the end of the day, this is about safety. It's about keeping our police officers safe, our firefighters safe, and ensuring that we are delivering the best service to our citizens. And so this is a great project for us. We did receive grant funding for this, partial grant funding for it. But it is, like I said, this is something that we've had in the CIP for quite some time and it's something that was moved forward because of this grant. And so we are extremely grateful for it.
Appreciate that. Thank you, Chief, for bringing us to a point about all these great things that your department and our police department also. Chief Deandra is really helping with all of these things, thank you.
Of course.
Thank you.
Councilmember Encinas.
No comments from me, Mayor.
All right, Counsel, we have a motion, the second on the floor, please vote.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Just for the record, I'd like to be known that I'll be voting no on item number 10E, 35-1804, relating to multifamily parking requirements and supporting the list.
Very good, thank you.
Mayor.
Councilmember Stewart.
I'll be voting on no on 10N.
All right, 10, so we have both of those, okay. Counsel, please vote.
Question carries unanimously with the exception of item 10E and 10N.
All right, thank you. Next on our agenda tonight is a public hearing, modified system development fees. So we have met, coming to give us a great presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Great to be here with you tonight as we talk about the system development fee update. This is nearing the last phase of our SDF update process that we've gone through over many months. So we're getting close to the end. And this is specific to the actual fees that are attributed to the updated land improvement and infrastructure improvement plan and land use assumptions that were voted in by Mayor and Counsel in January. and infrastructure improvement plan and land use assumptions that were, uh, voted in by Mayor and Council in January. Uh, so tonight, we're just going to briefly talk about the background and program requirements for the SDF fees, the fee categories and service areas that the city of Chandler has, uh, the fee update summary and then comparisons and, and the remaining project timeline. Of course, we'll be going through fairly quickly through this presentation, but it is available to the public on our website as well as all the presentations we've done in the past. Uh, additional information and the, uh, specifics on the plan, the hundred-page document is available there as well. So all that information is available to anyone that is interested. Uh, so this SDF process is governed by Arizona Vice Statute. Uh, and these are the developers that pay SDFs during the building permit process. I did learn certain, something interesting about developers, uh, as I was doing a little bit of research. Uh, they all have a favorite musical group, uh, which is the Carpenters. So I found that very interesting.
You've only just begun.
That's right. With these SDS, these are one-time funding sources that are for growth-related capital infrastructure. So it cannot be used to fund repairs, operations and maintenance, can't be used for capital that's not directly attributed to growth. And it must be infrastructure that's necessary for public services and directly provide the benefit for the developer. Okay, that one stayed finally. Uh, so why do we charge system development fees? Well, Chandler is one of the first cities in the state of Arizona to, uh, implement what was called impact fees at the time in nineteen ninety-seven in an effort to ensure that growth paid for growth. Uh, these SDF funds really allow us to provide the infrastructure that we need at a time in which we are experiencing rapid growth and as we had in the eighties, nineties, early two thousands. Uh, as the city of Chandler grew, we were able to use these funds for a variety of purposes. Uh, if not for these SDS, Chandler would have had to find alternative sources, revenue sources, either additional bond-related sources or additional taxes to fund the needed infrastructure for the growth. Uh, so really the SDS have allowed Chandler to keep our taxes low over the many years that we've had them, uh, provide the capital funding necessary for the growth that we are experiencing. Some examples of what we've done through arterial streets, fire stations, police facilities, libraries, parks, uh, utility projects. And we have a list below of some of the many things we've been able to accomplish using SDF fees over the many years. Of course, Arizona Vice Statute has some requirements that we must come, uh, make sure that we follow. The first is to complete a land use assumption and infrastructure improvement plan report every five years. Uh, we are legally required now to update our report, January of twenty twenty-nine, as we just adopted the latest LUA and IIP on January of twenty twenty-four. Uh, in this new five-year report, which includes updated fee schedules, uh, we had public outreach and a council approval process. We are also required under revised statute to prepare an annual report and post that online, which we do on our website. And we complete a bi-annual audit, which is also posted on our website. Uh, and results require a public hearing for that, that audit. Uh, that has to be prepared by a qualified professional. So we have an outside audit group that looks and makes sure that all of the expenditures that were, were used, SDF fees were for projects that were in our report, uh, and that all the fees collected were legitimate. We do have several fee categories. We have arterial streets, which has its own unique area in Chandler. We have parks, which has three service areas in Chandler. Fire, police and public buildings all have, the city of Chandler as a whole as a, uh, service area. And then we also have some fees that are based on meter size for water, wastewater and reclaimed water. Uh, this is a, a map of our arterial street service areas. So any developments that, uh, go in that darker brown area are the ones that would pay the arterial streets SDF fee. And then for park service areas, we have three, the northwest, northeast and southeast. Uh, primarily, the northwest is now closed. There's no fee in that area. All of the parks have been built. Uh, northeast still has, uh, or still remains as there are some outstanding debt that that one's paying off. And then the southeast is the one that you'll see some increases on because of the additional parks that are be going in, uh, in this next year or two. Mesquite Grove is being the largest. Uh, this chart shows the fee update with the strikeout of the current fee and then the new fee underneath. Uh, and this shows the different fees by unit or whether they're by square feet. And then for the reclaimed wastewater and water, it says C table A, which is the next slide, which are by, uh, meter size. Again, to put this in perspective, uh, here are some examples of what some of these permit costs will do. Uh, for a northeast service area development, when they pull a permit, uh, per dwelling unit for single family, that there's an increase of about nine percent. In the southeast service area, uh, the increase is more substantial at twenty-eight percent. The biggest driver there being that, that there are two parks remaining in the southeast service area to be built. Mesquite Grove and Montana Ranch. Again, for the northeast service area, a multifamily, uh, single-family unit would pay per unit about a one percent increase. Whereas in the southeast service area, because of those parks, uh, driving the increase there of about thirty-six percent. For commercial or retail SDF permit examples, uh, we have actually some good news for them as their costs would be going down about sixteen percent. Whereas for our offices, those would be going up about twenty-six percent. The primary driver for offices is the arterial streets. They made some adjustments in the calculations for the LUA and IIP of how arterial streets are managed for office-specific properties, uh, which caused an increase in that, that segment of the cost. For the industrial permits, those are going up about one percent, uh, pretty flat. And then institutional, which include, uh, our police, fire, public buildings, schools, uh, those are going up more substantially at seventy percent. The primary drivers there, arterial street, uh, had a, a significant increase, again, due to the change in how they calculated the utilization of streets. Uh, and then all other nonutility, which are like police, fire, public buildings, actual collections, going up a significant amount, but the dollar value of that is more, is less significant on these permits. So just a reminder of the timeline, we are under the yellow highlighted section tonight, our public hearing. Uh, the first read of the ordinance will come, uh, before you as well tonight. Uh, the final adoption of the ordinance will be in April, on April fourth, to meet the thirty-day requirement between sessions. And then the new fees would become effective July first of twenty twenty-four for the developers to pay on it, new projects that start in the new fiscal year. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, any questions?
Mayor.
Councilmember Stewart.
Thanks. So in our outreach, who have we reached out to? Have we reached out to any of the, uh, commercial brokers, chamber, you know, like what's been the feedback on this? And I like what you're doing, right? It's, it's a fairness play, which is good. I mean, everybody's paying their fair share, if you will, for the development. This is for things that are coming, not things that are here, just to be clear.
Yeah. Through the Mayor, Councilmember Stewart, uh, for the, the outreach program, we reached out to all of the local developing companies that typically pull permits with the city of Chandler, um, including major, uh, homeowner or home associations, the Builders Association of Arizona, uh, Commercial Builders of Arizona. And then the, the major home builders that pull permits in the city, uh, asked them if they would like to come in and have discussions with us. We had a group meeting in which we had only five individuals from, that represent the developers show up to those meetings. They didn't have any questions or have any issues with it, uh, other than they were appreciative of how conservative our approach was in, uh, how we kind of, uh, do our process. Uh, we did have one specific, the Arizona, um, Home Builders Association, a representative from them met with us individually, also was very appreciative of the work that we're doing and the conservative approach that the city of Chandler takes. So they didn't have any issues or see any kind of glaring omissions, uh, with the work that we're doing there.
You know, in light of inflation and everything that's been going on, you know, these are really modest increases and decreases in some areas. So I, I grateful, but, uh, cause at the end of the day, right? These get passed on to the consumer one way or another. So I appreciate you being mindful of that and keeping it under control. So thanks. Appreciate the, the outreach too.
Yeah.
Hey, um, I did notice on the, I think one of your last slides that you said non-institutional, including police and fire. So we're in essence, we're paying for those, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Through the mayor, or mayor, we would pay for those if we pull in a permit for a new, uh, construction and that has an SDF or impact fee upon it, we would pay an increased fee for those.
Okay. Yeah. Just to be clear that we're, we're, again, I know that also gets, uh, passed on, but ultimately we're not exempting ourselves from, from these fees as well. So any additional comments or questions from our council? Seeing none, uh, is there any discussion from the audience? Hearing none. I'd like to close our public, uh, hearing. Thank you, Matt. This moves us to our action agenda and the first item is actually voting on this. So council, is there a motion?
Mayor.
Councilmember.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Um, there's been some media attention on.
We're, we're voting on this.
Oh, I beg your pardon. I'm sorry.
I thought you wanted to make a motion.
I know.
Did your arm wrestling for a motion?
No, I thought we were moving to the action item.
No worries.
We are, but this is the first action item.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Councilmember Orlando.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to, to introduction, tentative adoption of ordinance five zero eight-three, amending appendix A of chapter third, gave the Chandler City Code to modify certain arterial street fire parks, police reclaimed water, wastewater and water system development fees.
Second. So we've got a motion by Councilmember Orlando, second by Vice Mayor. Any comments additionally?
And Mayor, just want to say, um, this has been a long process, as we all know. We've had several meeting, I don't know, three or four meetings on this and certainly appreciate, uh, the, the, uh, value of that process and, uh, the stakeholders. So, uh, this is a good one.
Yeah. Thank you. Council, please vote.
Question carries unanimously.
Great. Thank you. Next, before, uh, Councilmember Post, I'd like to call up, uh, Raylin Nielsen and, uh, give a presentation on items eighteen, nineteen and twenty. Did Matt Burdick break it?
Yeah, I did.
Well, I was waiting for you to comment on second-best hair in the city, but.
You are in a class of your own.
Thank you. Thank, thank you.
You weren't talking about Matt?
Right.
What about my ball head?
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here tonight to talk about agenda items eighteen, nineteen and twenty, which are as a result of the meet and confer ordinance. This ordinance was put into effect in two thousand and four, when the Chandler voters approved the amendment to our city charter. The meet and confer ordinance establishes the employee organization and management rights as well as those who are able to participate in the process. So currently we have three, Chandler Law Enforcement Association, or CLI, Chandler Lieutenants and Sergeant Association, or CLASA, and International Association of Firefighters, or IAFF. The ordinance establishes the process that we follow, which has allowable activities. So we spend our time talking about, um, items like wages, hours, benefits and other conditions of employment. Um, those areas such as staffing, performance evaluations and other employment actions, uh, fall outside of this process. So our goals in the process are to recognize and reward our employees. Uh, we remain competitive in the market to attract and retain quality employees, maintain parity within groups when possible, regardless of the employee association, and be fiscally responsible when we're, when we are reviewing pay and benefit packages as well as balancing city needs. So this process began with a combined budget briefing to all three associations done by the Management Services Department in August. The associations presented to Mayor and Council in an open meeting at the beginning of September. We had two executive sessions at the end of September for council to provide staff with direction on this process. And then we began negotiations at the beginning of October with tentative agreements at the end of November, wrapping up the process in December. Good Christmas present for us all. So the significant provisions of the agreements in front of you, they are all a two-year agreement beginning on July one, twenty twenty-four, expiring June thirty of twenty twenty-six. They include provisions for five percent merit increases for those covered under the agreements, um, a market adjustment based on an analysis that we will do in August, holiday overtime pay, um, an increase to the vacation accrual and cap, contributions to a post-employment health plan. And then in the CLI and CLASA, um, agreements, we have additional specialty units that we've added for pay differentials. We've made some minor adjustments to the compensation market methodology in both the CLASA and FIRE agreements. And then a one-time incentive payment of fifteen hundred dollars per employee each year of the agreement for those covered, um, in the CLI agreement. The current agreement, which began in July of twenty twenty-two, again expiring this June of twenty twenty-four, includes provisions, merit increase of five percent for all covered under the agreement, a change to our compensation market philosophy, moving us from fourth in the market to third in the market. Um, again, market increases based on an analysis done, um, in that market, a removal of our longevity cap, an increase to the post-employment health plan, um, at retirement. And then additional specialty units were added to pay differentials in the CLASA and CLI agreement, a one-time incentive payment of two thousand dollars in year one and an increase to the uniform allowance, again, in the CLASA and CLI agreement. And then on the FIRE side, we had an increase to the vacation cash out limit. Prior to that, we were again in a two-year agreement, which began, uh, July one of twenty twenty, uh, expiring on June thirtieth of twenty twenty-two, which included, um, merit increases of five percent for those eligible, market increases based on the market analysis we complete in August. Um, this is where we, uh, added specialty pay for those in certain specialty units in the CLASA and CLI agreement. And then we increased shift differential again in both of those agreements. So tonight, before you, you have three agreements for you to vote on. If those are approved, our next steps between now and June are, um, updates to our systems and our processes for implementation, um, the provisions going to effect on July one. And then we will complete those market compensation surveys again in August of each year of the agreement with those applicable pay increases going into effect at that time. So with that, if you have any questions for me, happy to answer it.
All right. Councilmember Stewart, you had requested this.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you go through, and thanks for putting this together. I appreciate you doing that. I mean, it's so important that we take care of the men and women that take care of us. It's very important that our public safety feels valued. So I have a, I have a handful of questions. Um, can you tell us what the MOU costs the taxpayer from the twenty twenty agreement, the twenty twenty-two agreement, and then what the cost was for this agreement for each of them?
I am sorry, I did not, I'm not prepared to answer that right now. I can get back to you on that. I just had the provisions of the agreement. I don't have the cost in front of me.
Do you know, like?
So you can get back to us with that?
I can get back to you on that. I, I would not want to speculate because there are market adjustments that are included in that.
Do you have any round numbers on what it was, maybe just two years ago and what it is this time?
I, again, I don't think I would want to speculate on that. Um, it would, it would be anywhere from the two million dollar mark upwards of to about six, six million dollars.
For this year?
And for our agreements in the past.
For each or is that everybody combined?
No. Each individual agreement has a different cost to it.
Okay.
Combination of that would, um.
Yeah. So is that in the, in the?
She can get that information to us, Councilmember. It's, it's available. She just wasn't prepared. That question wasn't offered to her.
Yeah. This is like one of the biggest things we do from a contract perspective for our, our men and women of our police. I think it's just important that the public knows what we've been doing. So real quick, uh, another question I have for you i- is, um, um, do we do anything like this for, maybe this is a better question for the city manager. Do we do anything like this for, uh, the generals or the, uh, like the commanders and the assistant chiefs or, or the chiefs? Do we, do they get this kind of deal too? Are they included in this?
Do you want me to answer this or? Yeah. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Stewart, um, we, we typically offer a, a benefits package and some pay adjustments to the general employees as well as what we call those, or uncovered employees that are not represented by a labor association. Um, historically, we have looked at what, uh, the, um, pub, public safety-covered labor associations have received as part of this negotiation, meet and confer process and use that to, uh, make sure that we are, uh, applying benefits that are hopefully competitive to other ranks that are not covered as well.
I got you. So you mentioned that we went from fourth to third with, with our folks, which is really good. good, like, compared to what, like, what they do out there in the world. Is, is our, is our, I guess what we call our leadership team, are they in that same range? Are they in third for pay compared to their peers?
So we do.
I mean, is it all married up, so that we're not?
Yep. Their methodology or market is just a little bit different, because the public safety and those covered under the MOU have a very specific defined market that we look at, and it includes other additional things, like the retirement health savings, contribution, or deferred compensation. So with our new class and comp philosophy, we now view the general employees and we look at the, the top 25th percentile to make adjustments to that, and we base that on the maximum of the pay, and exclude those other things that are included in the, the MOUs.
Okay. So, so, city mayor, is, so that's a policy, then? We're in the top 25% with our, with our leadership team as well? And is that, are they all in the top 25 compared to the peer groups that we're comparing our, our, our groups to, our, our labor groups?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Stewart, so when we first did the cop and class study and prepared for that, we brought that to you in a work session back in June of 2021? 2022, excuse me? And that was the philosophy that Council endorsed at that time, was the 75th percentile philosophy, and that was applied to all positions that are not covered by one of the labor agreements.
So all of our leadership teams in the top 25%?
All those positions were examined at the same time.
Okay.
With, with the market.
And that's total comp, yeah? Or is that just salary?
So, just the maximum of the range, yes.
Okay, all right, well, good. I appreciate that. I think that's all I have for you, Mayor. I mean, if, if that's in policy, I'd love to see it. I, I just haven't seen it, but I think I remember talking about it, but we go through so much stuff here, it just would help me to have that in my back pocket. Appreciate it.
Additional questions or comments?
Mayor.
Councilmember Orlando.
You bet. You know, to residents of Chandler, there's no secret out there that throughout our nation, our public safety officers, particularly police officers, are being branded, they're being, um, uh, I don't know, I, I don't want to get into the, the politics, but you know we're having a problem recruiting and retaining good people for our officers. This, this agreement tonight fixes a lot of things that's been occurring over the last three years in our city. It's allowing us to retain good officers, it allows us to recruit good officers, it's allowing us to be competitive, so that we can maintain that competitive edge. It's also allowed us to not only take care of those officers, and again, chief, fire chief, you're in this too, but I want to allocate our police officers, because they're, they're the ones that's suffering a lot of, of slings and arrows, and taking some beatings out there. Not only takes care of them while they're on active employment or service, but it takes care of their families. And, you know, being a military guy for 30 years, I can't do my job if I know my family's not being taken care of. This does that. This fixes a lot of holes in there, it fixes a lot of wellnessness issues and behavior health issues, and not only that, it will help those officers, and again, fireplace, so that when they do retire, because their injury rate, their suicide rate, their mental rate is segregated, and physical rate is segregated, and there's, there's a lot of effort out there, there's a lot of studies out there. This package, I have done a lot of these, this is my, I don't know, tent, this is the best package and the most concise package that we could ever offer the men and women that serve this city every day.
Vice Mayor. We're not ready for.
You did, you did the mic drop. Listen.
Everybody has questions?
As a military veteran myself, you know, I understand, you know, the sacrifices that the men and women of our city have to make each day. This particular contract helps us outline those things that helps them go a little bit further. I will, I will refer back to what the state of the city was, and what the mayor shared to all of our residents, when he said, "The people of Chandler are quality of life." When we did a survey, it came back, 99% of the people in Chandler supports and agrees that they have a high quality of life. He also shared that 98%, when the survey went out, 98% feel like they are cared by our first responders, 98% of our residents. 92% feel safe in the city of Chandler because of our men and women who's sacrificing, who's going out there and doing their job. 94% of residents in the city of Chandler feels they have a good return on their tax dollars. And as you heard today, we had an audit by a third party, our books are in line, and I'm a financial guy, and every dollar that we've said was going to be spent for the purpose of our residents have been spent and has been accounted for. And lastly, I'll say this, city services, the survey came back and said, 96% of people feel that they are getting good services. That's why we do these type of things, because when we're delivering great service, guess what we want our men and women to feel? Not just compensated, but they have the support, that they have a mayor and a council in a city that supports their efforts. I think that this is another way that we can continue to help our men and women from our first responders feel supported in what we're doing. And this was a long tedious process, and we thank you, Raylin, for all the many conversations. The, the public gets an opportunity to weigh in on all these many different things. And you know what they always say to me? I love our public safety, our public safety is the best. I'm so happy when I see public safety out there smiling and waving, because we got great people working for us in the city of Chandler. And no doubt about that, this is the best place to live, work, and play in, because we have individuals like our fire and our police who's working day in, day out, making sure that you and I can have this privilege of sitting in this room, having an uninterrupted meeting, in peace and harmony. So with that, I land the plane. As a veteran, I'm very proud of our city, very proud of our city manager, I'm proud of our mayor and our council, you guys are doing the work, Dawn, everyone. I love everybody, and you're doing a great job. Thank you.
I was wondering what country we were going to with that plane, but. Councilmember Ellis.
Thank you, Mayor. As a first responder, sitting here this evening, I want to take a moment to commend you, Raylin, for having really done the work and working with the team that was given to you. You did the best that you could to, for us to arrive where we are tonight. And it was not without difficulty. I mean, we could sit here and pontificate about how everything was great and everything, but there was a lot of challenges that we had to overcome, whether it was through the process of understanding what the needs were, and then for us to be able to have the money to meet those needs. And throughout it all, we really remain very well-balanced, and I will say that the people of Chandler are getting worth whatever it is that they are paying for at this point. Want to thank you, want to thank your department for doing all the work, and also, I would like to thank the team of CLIA that spent the time to, to speak with you. I personally had a chance to speak with the previous president and those who were at the table with you, they said this time they felt that there was more conversation, and there were more amicable way for them to come to the table, in order for them to be able to talk to you and receive, and, and come to a compromise for us to arrive where we are tonight. So this is a good place for us to be right now, and I appreciate all you have done to make it happen. Thank you, Ms. Raylin.
Thank you. I appreciate our relationships with the association.
Thank you, appreciate that.
We will be voting on these three separately, not a single vote per our attorney, but any other questions before I tender a, a motion? Councilmember Poston.
Would you like me to make those when that comes around, or can I do that now?
You can, whatever you would like.
And I'm sorry, I'm a little rusty being up here on the dais, so I jumped the gun a little bit earlier in here, so thanks for your patience. Oops, Raylin got out of here really fast, that's okay, I just wanted to say thank you for your work, I just wanted to echo the thank you. I know, I know that was a long process, and I appreciate that you put in all the work and, and made this a good process all the way around, so thank you very much. So finally, there's been some conversation about my company's work with CLE prior to my joining council, and so I just wanted to clarify for the voters and the Chandler residents, what's been done, and I did want to ask city attorney, I didn't take this lightly, and so I approached you more than a year ago, when I first came on council, and asked for your advice on whether there was a conflict of interest between my company's prior work and CLE. So would you just mind explaining what your opinion was at that time, about a year ago, I believe?
Mayor, if I may, Councilmember Poston, when we spoke prior to you taking the oath of office for the council position, we talked about your agreement with the association, your company's agreement, and I did, I believe, advise you at that time that if any matters came before the council relating to the organization while you had a contract with them, that would result in a conflict of interest, and my understanding is you terminated that agreement before you took office.
Okay. And, and if I remember your advice correctly at the time, at that time, you said, "At this point, you don't have a vote in front of you. So let's wait and, and address this issue again, when you do have a vote in front of you, which is tonight." So for item number 20, could you please provide your legal opinion on whether there is a conflict of interest for me tonight?
Again, Mr. Mayor, if I may, and Councilmember Poston, that is correct. There was no, nothing for you to vote on involving the organization, that's where the conflict would have arose. But based on your representations to me, that the contract with your company, J2 Media, has been terminated, was terminated over a year ago, that you have not, J2 Media and yourself, you have not provided any compensated services to an employee organization during your time on council, that you do not intend to seek any contract while you are a member of council. Based on these facts and under a legal analysis under Title 38 of the Arizona Revised Statutes, I do not believe you have a legal conflict of interest at this time on any of these agreements.
Okay. Thank you very much, city attorney, and thank you for that comment tonight and coming prepared with that. Mayor, I will be voting in line with the city attorney's advice on that item. Thank you.
Council, any other comments before we make a motion on each of these three?
One motion?
Seeing none, let's start the motions.
All right, let's move. Approve item 18, Memorandum of Understanding, Chandler Lieutenants and Police Sergeants Association, CLASSA.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second.
On 18?
18, yeah.
Oh, that was, I would like to make a motion on 19, that.
We're, we've got a vote on 18, yes.
Each one separately?
Yes.
Okay, you did 18, and you're second.
Thank you. All right, we got that settled.
Vote.
And Council, before.
Too many changes.
Before I do vote, I do want to thank Raylin, I do want to thank our, our union folks that really thought there was just above board in all the negotiations. You guys were looking out not only for the interest of the people that, that you represent, but I, I thought there was a lot of great faith in looking out for the interests overall of the city as well, and the long terms, and looking at one terms and ongoing, so I'm just appreciative of the way that everything came together this time as well, so.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, let's let someone else do, number 19. Who wants to do that? All right.
A middle motion, we pass number 19 and accept it, or this time? Second.
All right, we've got a motion in a second with our firefighters, item 19.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, who wants 20?
I'll do 20.
20, Vice Mayor.
All right, I'll do 20. I like the motion, Memorandum of Understanding for Chandler Law Enforcement Association.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second on item number 20.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, that concludes our action. Next is our unscheduled public appearance, and we have a very extraordinary first presentation for unscheduled. David Payne Jr. David, you have, uh, you're going to be good, but you got the three minutes to share. We cannot comment, because this is unscheduled, but you, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and City-Stars. My name is David Payne. I am the son of Officer David Payne, who was killed in land duty here in the city of Chandler. I am here tonight to not only speak on my behalf, but for everyone else across Arizona that has lost loved ones and here, oh, heroes. I would like to invite you all for this year's fallen officer race on Sunday, March 3, in downtown Phoenix. And don't worry, you don't have to run, you can just walk close to my mom's room. Last year, Team Payne, 574, received three medals. I was one of them, but guess what? Not only did my family run the race with me, but Councilmember Encinas and Councilwoman Ellis came out to join us too. I was indeed a pretty famous guy at the race because of this. My dad, this is more than a race, but we do our best to honor him and every other fallen officer in Arizona every year. I would appreciate your support and look forward to having the whole team Chandler one day at the race. Thank you for all that you do in our city, and a big thank you for my fellow group family who protects us daily.
Alexis, can you make sure that that information is presented to us, and the times and locations, et cetera? Thank you.
Can we make sure he gets a little Chandler pin as well? Oh, you gave one, okay, got it.
All right. Next, in our unscheduled public appearances, I've got several related to a, a, a development in Gilbert, if I could, and I'm just going to read them in order. Rosanna Mena, again, we cannot comment to you, but you have up to three minutes to share your thoughts if you so choose. Rosanna Mena?
I didn't want to be the first one.
Yeah, you, I'm sorry. Just the way they came to me. But if you please state your name and address, for the record, you have up to three minutes to share your thoughts. We cannot.
So my name is Rosanna Mena, and I am a resident in Chandler, Peterson Farms, Gilbert and Germaine Road. So I'm just going to read this paper, and be alerted that Gilbert is preparing to amend location south of southwest Germaine Road and Mustang Drive from a general office to a residential, more than 25 to 50, to a high-density multifamily development, with a planned area development to allow for multifamily residential development. As a citizen of Chandler and your constituent, I write to say that I am entirely opposed to this development, which would disproportionately impact Chandler neighborhoods and quality of life in key ways. If this is approved in Gilbert, we are not going to feel loved in Chandler, and we are not going to feel safe in Chandler. I'm just repeating the words that were said here before. So we are asking Chandler to help us fight this development that is going to come to 10 feet from my backyard, 10 feet from my backyard. So, um, it will further create an incredible influx of traffic on Gilbert Road and Germaine, transform our residential Chandler neighborhoods even further into high-density areas, and bring additional risk of crime to family-friendly Road Runner Park. Just yards from this development, I fully expect you to represent me, a Chandler resident, against Gilbert's plan to encroach on our beloved communities. Chandler and Gilbert share a long and mendering border, and the citizens of Chandler are watching to see how you, our elected representatives, uphold our interests. Moreover, if this body fails to preserve our neighborhood, doing nothing against the encroachment of high- encroachment of high-density developments just yards from where we live, we are willing to take political action with our vote to install stronger representatives who champion, the champion, the Chandler voice. Exploiting the municipal lines between Chandler and Gilbert against Chandler residents will not become a precedent for easy rezoning projects simply because the impacted party does not live within the lines of others building projects. The citizens of Chandler will be heard. The Gilbert contact for this proposed rezoning is Nicole Russell.
Thank you, ma'am.
Red.
Our next speaker card is Carlos.
Mayor, I have a question real quick to the City Manager.
Okay.
May I?
You may.
Okay. City Manager, from my understanding, this project has nothing to do with Chandler, right?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Ellis, uh, this project is not located within the boundaries of the city of Chandler, is my understanding. It's in the town of Gilbert. So this body would not hear that case. My understanding as well is that this has actually not been submitted formally to the town of Gilbert yet. I believe a neighborhood meeting was held, but they have not actually made a formal application for the rezoning as of yet, is the latest we have heard from the town of Gilbert.
Uh, this one will be for our attorney. Since this is a city of Gilbert issue, what is it that we, the mayor and council here in Chandler, have to do with that?
If I may, Mayor-
Please.
-Councilmember Ellis, um, this body has no jurisdiction over a development being proposed in Gilbert.
All right. Our next speaker is Carlos Valayo?
Valio.
Thank you. I apologize for butchering your name so badly. And you have up to three minutes to state your name and address for the record, sir.
So I'm also a resident of Peterson Farms. I've been there since 2003, so it'll be 21 years in the same home. And it should be noted regarding this project, that across the street adjacent to the Chandler neighborhood of Eagle Glen 1, they changed the zoning to approve the lift, now called the Curb Apartments. They have 356 units on only 19 acres, as well as the project Town Germaine, which is gonna have 209 units on 14 acres. Both of these developments are adjacent to the city of Chandler subdivision, which are single-family homes, and they are rated, those developments in Gilbert are rated at 14 to 25 DU per acre or medium density, both of those projects. They are now asking to change the zoning on this parcel, the last piece of land they have left to develop in that area, uh, to accommodate 134 units on only 4.4 acres. And these are mostly single-bedroom units. This is a change to a residential 25 to 50 DU per acre or high density. They are planning two towers of apartments, four and three stories high, with balconies overlooking the backyards of our homes. And they only propose a 10-foot landscape setback before the parking starts. They do not have enough parking, it's only a 10-foot setback. Somebody's gotta stand up for it. The city of town Chandler needs to say, you need to listen to our neighbors because they're your neighbors. They're right next door to you. You can't do whatever you want there just because they're not subject to your planning. So I ask you guys to get involved and say, hey, you need to treat these people as if they were your own. Now, I will mention that on the subdivisions next door, they have almost 52 feet of setback, so why are they only giving us 10? So, uh, my time is almost up, so I'll leave it at that. But I would like for the city of Chandler to make their presence known, so that they don't use this project to give developer a bunch of money, because they package many units as they possibly could fit in whatever land is remaining in that area. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is, uh, Marcus Cabrera. Marcus? Again, sir, if you'd please state your name and address for the record. And you have up to three minutes.
All right, thanks so much, Mr. Mayor, esteemed council, Alexis, who put her steps in tonight. Um, I speak on behalf of my fellow neighbors and your voting constituents on the same issue, Peterson Farms, by the way. Um, we're all from the same area. So the project, um, that we've been talking about here, uh, it's going to permanently change Chandler communities. So that's, Mr. Mayor, the, the, uh, expressed interest in council's, um, involvement with this plan. While not in Chandler, uh, it is going to permanently change our bor- our border communities. Um, on behalf of your fellow Chandler voters, um, please, we ask, Mr. Mayor and council, that you work with Gilbert to stop the project as soon as you can, before it gains further traction. As mentioned, in Gilbert, uh, they, they only have it in a proposed, uh, committee. It is not up, um, on one of their agenda items. So they can't take our comments, um, formally into consideration, although we have been working with Nicole Russell at, in Gilbert, communicating with her, um, providing her lists and comments, um, but she has no place to, to put them on record since it's not, um, formally up for vote yet, which is actually a good, good for us, because we're hoping that you can represent us, um, to work with them to stop this development, um, which only impacts predomin- well, it predominantly impacts Chandler residents, especially our parks, um, and our access to the freeway. We understand that this position is, is, uh, difficult for you, and it's unique in that it is not pertaining within Chandler's boundaries. But that's why we're asking, while a difficult position for you, while it's a temporary position for you, it is a permanent position for us. We are, we are homeowners, we live in this area, um, councils come and go, but we will be there forever. And so we're asking for you to be our voice, be our neighbor, get involved with us, and work with, with Gilbert, um, which we also love. We love Gilbert, um, but we need to work together to make this, um, livable for us. Um, they can't just dance along this, this border, um, and playing these zoning, these zoning games, knowing that the constituency is not their voting constituency, it's another city's constituency. We ask you to help us, essentially help us Chandler residents with the power that we've, we've bestowed on you as voters to represent us. Um, we expect that you will advocate for our interests, championing the Chandler voice beyond our city's borders, work with Gilbert to stop this, as I said. Um, again, our parks and our streets are gonna be impacted by this development. Um, we ask that you put the full weight of what makes Chandler great behind this, um, stopping this project, or at least having a dialogue. You know, we were talking before this meeting, um, we're 100% open to, uh, an assisted living facility, has less traffic, less high-density, brings jobs, things that a hi- a, a three-story high-density complex would not do. So we're, we're open to, to dialogue here, but we need your help. Um, I've communicated with Nicole, as I said, my time is almost up, but I do have 45, uh, names and households. Um, it would mean a world, the world to them if, if you heard what their names were. Um, I have these here if you're interested. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Thank you, sir. If you could bring those over to the clerk-
Yes.
-or to him. Thank you. I have one more speaker card, I, I believe very similar. Bridget Vega? Is Bridget Vega here? Again, if you would please state your name and address for the record.
Mine's not on that topic.
Okay.
And it might go a little bit over, as it is a community statement on teen violence. Good evening, Mayor and Council. For God has not given us a spirit of fear, but of power, love, and self-control. God is love. We want to take a moment to acknowledge you, Mayor and Councilmembers, for being a beacon of hope during this epidemic of teen violence. I personally want to say thank you as a survivor advocate on the front lines of human trafficking outreach. Thank you for spending $2.5 million to fight against the evil of sex trafficking. It was nice to see your councilmembers at the Night of Hope, taking a stand to say not in our city. When we don't have all the answers, you have opened your arms to meet the community, to help create solutions, while acknowledging and taking a stand against teen violence. Thank you all for listening to understand, showing heartfelt condolences, empathy, compassion, and genuine concern. Thank you for leading the way and showing what true leadership looks like, even outside of the meeting. You have brought awareness and prevention pieces into multiple events and speeches outside of the community and these four walls. Amidst the darkness, there is a beacon of hope in an amazing community that is not letting the councilmembers, school districts, or police off the hook. Seventeen-year-old named Connor Darnigan, he took a courageous stand against the narrative. In the face of opposition, he spoke out, met with members of public office, and gave his testimony, showing us what true courage looks like. It has been said, this is the goodness that 17-year-olds can do to wake up a community. His actions remind us that courage is possible, even in the face of adversity. We must confront the uncomfortable truths within our communities. We cannot turn a blind eye to the struggles our teens face every day, from mental health issues to societal pressures. We must address the underlying issues of abandonment, control, anger, alcohol, drug abuse, that plague families. Recovery begins with acknowledging our faults and seeking redemption. We must trust in a higher power, humble ourselves, and embark on the journey of self-improvement. Only then can we extend a helping hand to others and heal our communities. Let us not be biased standards, but agents of upstandards and change. Let us commit to breaking the cycle of harm and fostering a community built on love, empathy, and accountability. Together, we can create a brighter future for generations to come. We have no future if we don't protect the children. We have a duty to protect the innocent. If not, that blood is on our hands. Together, we must rise for the children. It starts with one person. It starts with you. Stand tall and speak your truth, the world will adjust. They cannot take your voice. It's never too late to do what's right. As a community, we wanted to see how to go about getting a teen violence justice for the youth and Preston Lord Table for Awareness and Prevention at the Ostrich Festival. Please continue to keep the Lord family and all of the youth who've been murdered and assaulted mentally, sexually, and physically.
Bridget, thank you.
I'm almost done, two, two seconds. To the youth, we are sorry for everything you've endured. Please know we're here for you, you are enough. Your voice matters. We see you, we hear you, we stand by you. If we can take a moment of silence for Preston Lord and all of the youth and those who've lost due to senseless acts of violence.
Thank you.
Thank you. See something, say something, do something. Rise up, Chandler.
City Manager, before we, uh, go into our next set of stuff, could you have staff, uh, just communicate to council any opportunities in Gilbert to, to, um, speak regarding this other, um, possibilities and, and keep us abreast if there's speaking junctures that we can help with their voice on this particular one?
Yes, sir.
All right, that brings us to current events, and, uh, I'll start. I do want to thank each and every one of the members of our community who took time out of their week to attend our State of the City address last Thursday, or who have constantly conversely watched it online. Our theme, What Brings People Together, is emphasized, uh, again and again, and, uh, by the hundreds of folks that were there, and we will continue to move forward. I do want to thank our staff that are behind this wall, uh, Stacy, Courtney, Julie, Melinda, uh, for making this possible, and the rest of Team Chandler at the Center for the Arts. And of course, I want to thank my fellow councilmember for your support in, uh, making this awesome as well. So it was, uh, uh, very pleased with, uh, the presentation and, uh, and really the message that we're able to communicate. Secondly, uh, I was going to communicate, uh, budget survey results, but my, uh- So thirdly- Oh, I shouldn't have done that, I threw something away there. Yeah, I, thirdly, I did have the, the chance to, uh, attend a groundbreaking today, uh, Wedgewood Pharmacy. They're gonna be, uh, moving in about 100,000 square feet over by our airport on, uh, Northrup, and, uh, cutting its treatments to, uh, that, that address diseases in animals, uh, cancers and others, that it would be custom-made, and really an incredible group of people, and I'm proud that they're part of our innovation node at the airport. And we'll be having a ribbon-cutting, uh, expect in, in a year from now. And then lastly, before I turn it over to the council, um, from my State of the City, does anyone remember what the word "struthio" means?
Ostrich.
Ostrich, that's why I'm wearing my ostrich tie. The Ostrich Festival is around the corner. This is our last council meeting before it starts. And so get ready for two fun-filled weekends at Tumbleweed Park on March 8, 9, and 10, and 15, 16, 17. You can see musical guest Shaggy, Big &amp; Rich, Young Gravy, and Chris Lane, to name a few. And had you been at our, our Disabilities Run, you could have seen, uh, the incredible dance team of Encinas, Ellis, Harris, and Hartkey as we were out, uh- Doing a twist, yeah. So anyway, I hope that you will join us all at our Ostrich Festival. And lastly, did I say lastly before?
Yeah, you did.
I'm a preacher. And lastly, uh, this week is in the middle of, uh, Engineers Week. Yeah, Odie, you have nothing to say on this one, sir. We have many skilled engineers in our city that keep our city running, uh, from our fire department to public works and utilities. So thank you to all of our skilled professionals that make Chandler what it is. Councilmember Encinas.
Thank you, Mayor. So last week, I had the privilege to join the mayor and my fellow councilmember, um, Christine Ellis, here at the Hartford Sylvia Encinas Elementary School, where all 830 students were surprised with a free new bike. This was all made possible thanks to the Going Places and the Deanne Flores Shirts Foundation, which was created in her honor, uh, for the former Hartford teacher. Uh, the big bike reveal took place on what would have been her 60th birthday, and it was a beautiful way to honor her memory and show the love for community that is so present here in Chandler. This was such an exciting day for our Hartford students, and I want to thank everyone that was involved, all the volunteers, all of our, uh, police officers that helped build those bikes and make this great event happen. That's all for me today. Just one, hopefully you guys all have one announcement.
Oh, my goodness. Well, well, let's talk about Ascent Egg Benefit Breakfast. It just came out last Thursday, was the annual Ascent Egg Benefit Breakfast. This event provided an opportunity for attendees to support Ascent in their mission to change lives by nourishing minds, bodies, and creating a connected, thriving community. We had a, a couple of people there that were so amazing about the things that they do, uh, for the community. One of them was a, almost a 90-year-old, a lady who's still volunteering. And then we had another gentleman where his whole life was changed when Ascent came into play to find him a place to live. Ascent is a very critical community partner that provides food boxes, participates in I Help Program, and facilitates rent, and, uh, utility assistance, to name a few of the services they provide. These community partnerships are vital for the city to do our work effectively and for our community to receive the services that they need. So I'm, I was very glad to be there and enjoy it. You were there with me too. Councilmember, it was really Mayor was there. Um, Councilmember, Vice Mayor Harris, your name was mentioned, but you were not there. So, thank you for skipping out on us. My next, my next announcement was, is about North the Musical. It's coming again, uh, continuing the Black History Month. This celebration this year, we're gonna continue with the North the Musical. It will be featured as Chandler, at the Chandler Center for the Arts on Friday and Saturday. I'm planning to be there on Saturday afternoon, so join me. This uplifting story of black power and perseverance is just one of many opportunities offered throughout the month of February to celebrate the contribution and history of the black community. So we ask you to come out, for more information, and to purchase ticket, head down to Chandler Center, ChandlerCenter.org, that's it. I thought it was gonna be CenterCCA.org, but it's ChandlerCenter.org. Last one, we have Pastor Victor, uh, here, but, uh, Friday night also, uh, it's gonna be the 12th Annual African-American Bankewet. Uh, last year, I received an award as the first female responder to ever receive an award from, uh, the Men of Chandler Organization. They are providing, uh, great excellence, and, uh, I will say more, uh, it's gonna be a lot of dancing going on. Wouldn't be? Yeah, yeah, there will be a lot of dancing. So it's gonna be remarkable. So it's gonna be remarkable contribution of outstanding men who have made a lasting impact on our community. So they always really bring in young men, that's the part that I'm really very, I would say, happy about, because you always use those young men and give them awards to help them move forward. And Mr. Cooper is gonna be there, he's always emcee for them, so it's gonna be an amazing evening. If you are not at the North, please make sure that you're at the musical tomorrow evening. You won't see me, but you will see me Saturday afternoon. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
I don't know if I should go out there, I got multiple call-outs on it. But I wanted to say thank you to Pastor Hardy because we tasked him with the incredible opportunity to go out and make black history happen in the month of February, and he did such a fabulous job stepping up, making it happen, and coordinating with all the different African-American-led groups, and I just want to tell you, thank you so much, I'm excited about tomorrow night, I can't wait, you know I'm gonna be on the dancing floor, so put on the wobble. I'm gonna be wobbling with anyone that wants to wobble with me. Thank you. So I want to get to my announcements. On Friday, I had the opportunity to co-chair and host the Big Brothers Big Sister of Central Arizona on a big night gala, big night out gala. This was an incredible experience connecting with inspiring mentors and mentees here in the work of Big Brothers Big Sisters is doing to help our young people to reach their full potential. It was an amazing opportunity just to kind of be able to remind people of what it really means to have a Big Brother. As you can see, my wife and I, we was the co-chairs for it, and we helped raise four-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars that night through sponsorships and through giving. It was an amazing event, it was absolutely, it was sold out, actually, there was no seat, and it was Mardi Gras, and my wife is Creole, so she really enjoyed that, we had the bands going through. It was just a great time for us to celebrate Big Brothers Big Sister mentees and helping the youth for tomorrow and inspiring for tomorrow. So, also, I had the opportunity this week to speak at various schools for Black History Month as well. I went to, I was just, I went, I've been all around the valley, actually, I was in Chandler, then I was in Phoenix, but I will say this much, you know, being able to get an opportunity to talk about you, Councilmember Ellis, the first black female to serve on the city council, I talked about you, I talked about Coy Payne, who was the first black mayor, I also talked about Phil Westbrook, who was a vice mayor here as well, I also had the opportunity to talk about Mr. Foley, who also fought Muhammad Ali, but he was a council member as well. So I've been having a great time talking about the rich history of Chandler as well as NJ Harris. So we continue to have strong roots grounded with African, with the African-American community, and I just love bragging on what we're doing in Chandler, so this was just another opportunity for me to brag on those things, thank you.
Are you done?
I'm done.
Well, I'm not planning on wobbling with you, but since I don't know what it is, please let me know if I accidentally wobble.
I got you.
Councilmember St.
That's fantastic, and I think eight, tomorrow at eight, there's the Black-Led Business Roundtable at West Valley Barbecue, too, which is good. I hope I didn't steal anybody's announcement. But I want to thank Councilmember Ellis and Vice Mayor Odie Harris for attending Night of Hope with me on this past Sunday. So Mike Gowan's, the pastor for Bethel Church, who offered our prayer this morning, or this evening, was actually joined several other pastors from around the valley at Grand Canyon University, and we spent an evening basically shaking our fist at human traffickers and raising awareness. We brought together law enforcement, clergy, elected officials, and fighters against this human trafficking epidemic, and we are, everyone up here is committed to stamping out human trafficking in Chandler, and there are several other cities that, well, there were twenty other cities that signed a proclamation that they're making a commitment. So the awareness is elevating, folks, and we need to be talking about this. And so I will continue to serve on the board of Night of Hope, and I'll continue to do whatever I can to end human trafficking as we know it. The last thing I'll say is that Chandler and this mayor and council and staff has been instrumental in helping raise awareness and also provide the funding that's needed to make this happen. I know our chief and our officers will continue to work on that. On another note, as it relates to public safety, not public safety, but on encouraging our youth, our Teen Leadership Academy applications are up and available, so we are currently accepting applications for our 2024 Teen Leadership Academy. This program is scheduled for Friday, March fifteenth, which falls over CUSD and other school breaks, and will provide Chandler teens an inside look at government. This event is planned by teens, for teens, so our mayor's youth commission works all year to plan this event, so make sure it's something that teens want to attend. Applications are accepted on a first-come, first-served basis, it can be found at ChandlerAZ.gov/TeenLeadership. That's all for me, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Linder.
Thank you, Mayor. It must be a full moon tonight, I think, this is a rowdy council, we're good. Well, this is the 13th Annual Chandler Innovation Fair is returning this Saturday. In fact, this is the third year that we've combined with the students from the Chan United School District Science Fair. We used to have two separate ones, about three years ago, we brought them together as even more successful. It'll be from ten AM to two PM in downtown Dr. A.J. Chandler Park, so the community is invited to come and explore the businesses, arts, students, innovators, and the community as Chandler participates in the statewide Arizona Science Tech Festival, and I can't wait to see that rocket launching again. This is a free event, it offers unique opportunities to attend explored discoveries in our backyard, and as it's being free, and as the mayor liked to say, it's free parking. All right, the mayor likes to forget. So I'm looking forward to you come on out on this Saturday from ten to two, and enjoy the beautiful weather, and it's really cool talking to the kids, and the students are so excited about their projects, so come on out there and you'll have a good time. That's all, Mayor.
Councilmember Poston.
Just very quickly, Mayor, I just wanted to say that this has probably been the most difficult month for me and my family that I've ever experienced in my entire life, but I will say that the outpouring of support from the community, and I just want to specifically thank every member of this council, because the outpouring of support from you has been more meaningful than I think you will ever know, both for myself and for my family, so from all of us, I just want to just give you a very sincere thanks tonight, so I really appreciate that.
We're glad to have you back here with us tonight, too. City manager, you?
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
All right, that concludes our time.